I don't want to knock.
Yeah.
So it can't get out of its precious stuff and that doesn't happen. You don't do that. Which.
He's gonna be, I think he's probably here, he's on the phone, but he's not.
Well, I think we haven't gone through this. They haven't gone through.
The day was a day to be canceled.
It was Kansas.
That was so disgusting when I saw that.
I'm just like.
That's weird.
Oh, really?
Everybody I've always talked to just right or life is something, the things you thought were pretty good. Other industries are.
You still try to market, you still try to, you know, stay in the ballgame.
Yeah.
Doesn't go in that much.
Call order council meeting for February twenty second, if everyone would stand for the pledge.
For the reasons of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and visible in liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, blessed decisions of this body, guys tonight, and the future as well. Amen.
Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gornau.
Present.
Mr. Lau.
Here.
Mr. McNeese.
Here.
Mr. Ravellette. Mr. Stangle.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Mr. Salters.
Here.
Mayor Yocum.
Here.
Okay, next is adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Stangle.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval of the February eighth minutes?
Make a motion to approve the February eighth minutes.
Second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mr. Stangle.
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette. Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, they are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. And then we'll go to committee chair reports.
The Public Safety Committee has a meeting this Thursday here at City Hall at six thirty.
And the Pantheon Building Board had a special meeting to approve the final stages of the exterior construction, the EDA grant portion. Everything was approved, so that's gonna go to the state to be finalized. Should start seeing, should start seeing work by June.
Put it up for bed.
Yep.
June is what you said?
I think June, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah, well, we know how things have been going. Solid Waste, obviously, Michelle came here and discussed with us kind of where they're at and wanted to kind of our approval. She went to county council, and you guys voted through six oh, is that right? So they're all on board, we're all on board, so at our next solid waste meeting, we'll give that, the mayor and I will give our votes and approval for that, and I think everybody will be on board, but I won't say it without everybody going through the vote, but everybody's pretty confident in that, which will allow us to expand services, which is what we want to see here in the city of Vincent, and so we've got that. I did send you guys an email where we're kind of going to change the committee, kind of the communication outreach and transparency. What's worked real well for us right now is kind of video outreach, so I'll just have you guys do specific video outreaches for your specific districts, and I kind of laid that out for you, so whatever you need to do, we'll do that. That's worked really well, it's been really easy, and that allows us to get direct contact with our districts, so that's kind of what that's going to be in that committee, so just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page there, so those are the two committees that I've got.
I have two committee reports. One, first, Area Plan Commission, solar ordinance, talking about that, there will be most likely a vote on the solar ordinance next Tuesday. We'll be at the water department, water plant, six P M, I believe. It is, it has been an interesting process. If you, it will be virtual too. If you want to attend virtual, you can look at the Area Plan Commission, they'll give you a link, you can call them, they'll give you a link. The other committee, Vincent's Redevelopment Commission, we, under item B, under new business, we have people here that are gonna be discussing some zoning ordinance changes that'll go to the area plan. But the Redevelopment Commission has a number of people that are looking at doing housing in our community, much needed and much appreciated. One of the things the Redevelopment Commission is looking at is the possibility of a residential TIF zone. Some numbers were presented, you know, based on a number of houses, how much revenue would it generate? I don't know where we're gonna go with that, if we'll be bringing it to council to have that, a council will have to adopt that, but that's, that's what's going on there. That's it.
Councilman McNeese, what's that process look like for residential TIF? Does that start at the R D C or does that start with another entity first?
It, it, well, that's a good question. We've been discussing this over and over. The rules have been changing along the way as well at the, at the state legislature. It, it appears that we'll initiate it, we'll say that we would like to do it, it'll come before the council, the council will then have to vote on it to decide if we should.
Doesn't the school board have a vote as well, is that correct?
I'm sure there'll be a public hearing.
There'll be a lot of.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, because there's a bunch of different entities that go with this.
All the different taxing units will have their opportunity to speak for or against.
And that would happen just like what we've had today with a public hearing at the beginning of this meeting.
I know you guys have done your homework on it, and I mean.
Yes, we have, but it's changed. I mean, everything, they do keep changing on us.
Yeah.
The state legislator keeps changing the rules on it along the way, so we'll see where it lands. Okay.
Any other committee reports? If not, we'll go to report of city officers. Chief Dunham would like to.
Bob Dunham, Police Department, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention, the mayor had the opportunity to present lifesaving awards at the Board of Works meeting to Captain Josh Burke and Officer Michael Caswell. On February eighth, the school was gracious, Lincoln High School was gracious enough to let's use the auditorium for our annual meeting, and as the two officers pulled up into the parking lot, a young man, eleven-year-old Ryder Duke came running to the, to their vehicles and saying his brother needed help, which was twelve-year-old Colton Duke. And Colton had wrapped a seatbelt around his throat several times, and it was locked down, and the officers tried to get it loose, he started gasping for air, and we had to cut the seatbelt off. It's just one of those things, we were at the right time and the right place, and the mayor, Sergeant Hillenbrand submitted a letter requesting the awards be presented. The mayor board agreed, and they reissued the awards today.
That's great.
And again, we want to commend Captain Burke and Officer Caswell.
Yep.
Okay, public comment. Public comment, we'll go to old business. First up is business updates.
All right, so business update, I'll hit a little bit on that, on our gift card giveaway, that's really kind of taken off. The key point that we wanted to do is add emphasis during this quarter to our small business. What we are seeing through our gift card giveaway is we've had interactions with over ten thousand people a day, which then puts it at about fifty thousand for the week. The numbers have kind of been through the roof, and our whole purpose of doing this was to drive interest and drive people to our local business, and I think that it has done that. So we've got, after we finish out this week, we'll have five more weeks of this, we'll kind of bring the numbers with that. The businesses that we've had so far, we did District One, we started District Two this week, today, and kind of the feedback from District One, Councilman Grove, we'll talk about that a little bit later, it's for good of the order. But we've got a lot of good feedback for it, and, and the key thing, we want to drive focus, we want people to talk about these businesses, and that's what we're seeing, so we're getting a lot of good feedback from it, this is what it's designed to do, and it's really doing well, so that's a big positive for our business updates.
Okay, well, next go to county metric update.
All right, our county metric information right now, compared to where we were at two weeks ago, and then if you look even farther, our numbers are almost as good as they've been since we started. If you look at it today, the mayor and I were kind of shocked when we saw active cases, our active caseload's at twenty-one, it hasn't been at that level since May, maybe? I mean, you look at that, that's impressive. A couple of weeks ago, we were looking at a positivity rate of like ten, and then even before that, it was fifteen, two more weeks before that, we were at two point three today. So we've gone from seeing numbers where we were seeing, you know, twenty to thirty new cases a day, we're seeing one, two, we had a couple of days last week in the zeros. This is huge news for us, and, you know, the counties really, everybody, our businesses, individuals, our nonprofits are really working hard, they're following the protocols. People are staying masked up, they're washing their hands, they're socially distanced, they're getting a vaccine when they have the opportunity to do it, and I mean, Knox County's really knocking it out of the park when it comes to vaccinating. I took my grandmother to the clinic to watch how smooth that place runs, I mean, it, it's just impressive, the teamwork that you're seeing at the county level, everybody, every department, every group's talking with each other, and you don't really see that in a lot of other places, like, everybody's kind of got their fiefdom here, everybody just wants to get the job done. When you look at a bigger scale, too, in the state of Indiana, Indiana's been under a thousand total cases for two or three days, and it's maybe right at that, and it's been that way for a couple of weeks. Indiana as a whole is right at four percent positivity, and when you look at it, there were no red counties last week in the state of Indiana, and a few orange, which, two weeks ago, it was half red, four weeks ago, it was all red. So we get to this spot, we are trending to blue, and if we're not blue this week, we'll be blue the week after, so we are in a really good spot, but one of the key things we need to remember, like, we kind of end it with every caveat, this is not a time for us to lay our guard down, we need to stay focused, kind of keep the foot on the gas around any of these things, so we can kind of push this behind us, because that's where we want to be, but we're in a very good spot right now. And a lot of it, you know, you gotta tip your hat to all the people that are working hard to get us to where we're at.
New business, first up is Resolution One, twenty twenty-one, this is a resolution that authorizes us to apply for Phase Three grant for COVID dollars.
So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we had a public hearing on this resolution, nobody spoke for or against, and with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to read and approve Resolution One, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to read and approve Resolution One, twenty twenty-one.
Resolution number one, twenty twenty-one, resolution of the Vincent's Common Council authorizing application submission and local match commitment for the CARES Act, or the, I'm sorry, O C R A, grant containing sections one and two for a total of, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, local match from Board of Works would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, any discussion?
All right, and we've applied for two of these already, and the big change here, Matt, is the expansion into the food bank program, correct?
Correct, Dan. The city will be applying. City will be applying, I think the way the breakdown is right now, one hundred and fifty thousand will go to businesses, kind of an extension of the current program, and then a hundred thousand dollars will be for expansion of food pantry services, and I think the way we're looking at doing that right now is the food pantries would apply for funding, it'd be run through the city, the city would disperse those funds, if the city were awarded the grant funds.
Similar to what we've done with our small businesses through the city, correct?
Right, right. Yeah, the, that grant program would remain the same, is my understanding.
So I mean, that one, you know, we've already got the structure in place, ready to go, so this one just, probably something similar.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette. Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Stangle.
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, Resolution One, twenty twenty-one passes. Next is ordinance five, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Knox County zoning ordinance for the Broadway Place subdivision.
All right, make a motion to read ordinance five, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have first reading of ordinance five, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance five, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance adopting amendments to the, should be Knox County zoning ordinance, changing various zoning from, that is currently C two, R one, and R two, containing sections one, two, and three, for a new housing development containing the lots thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight.
Okay, discussion?
All right, so typically what we'll do, like, if we got discussion, but then we'll usually approve, and then it goes to area plan for the next, I do have one question. When it has kind of the roadway standards with the sidewalk on one side only, was there a rationale behind that? Or reasoning, just, we had sidewalks on one way only?
Does somebody want to come up and talk?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious. On one side, I'm sorry, not one way.
Yeah, yeah, if I could, for the record, my name's Steve Bree-Hob, and I'm with Banning Engineering, and we're representing the petitioner, Sure Clean Investments. Really, the only rationale was just to try to get the, the most bang for the buck that we could, to try to build as, as much of the development. It's a dead, it's a dead-end street, it's fourteen lots, thirteen building lots, and so we were gonna put sidewalk on, on the side of the road that had the majority of the lots. So taking sidewalk off of one side, there would only be four lots that would not have sidewalk in front of them, and we were thinking, with a low-volume road, that they could either walk across the road or walk down the road, but regardless, it's, it's not a deal killer for us to not have sidewalk on both sides of the roadway.
Okay, and just for the record, the reason that was asked is because we have a complete street ordinance.
Sure.
That requires sidewalk.
So to stay in compliance with the ordinance, it'll have sidewalks on both sides? Yes, and that's, that's fine. Uh, how many, just for the, for the record to the board, how many of the spaces, how many, how much of it is platted, commercial, residential, into light industrial currently? What is the current zoning? Right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge mess of zoning, and I don't know why. Part of the property is, is some of the former Myers, single-family residential subdivision, an old platted subdivision, with some streets and some alleys that have never been developed. And then a portion of it is, is, I'm gonna call it the leftover land behind the car wash and the, and the insurance agency, so that portion of the land where the old, I'm gonna call it the chicken processing plant. That's what it was. Okay, where the old chicken plant was at, that portion is, is zoned commercial. Then there's a, then there's another little strip within the single-family subdivision that fronts on Broadway that is zoned C two commercial too, no idea why. So what we're wanting to do as part of this development is kind of clean all of that, all of that up, remove the, the R two zoning, remove the C two zoning, and zone all of it to planned unit development. Now, the only reason that we're using the planned unit development zoning is, is to fit the lots into the overall property shape that we have available. The majority of the, the R one zoning standards can be met, except there's a provision in the R one zoning standard that says the lots have to be a hundred and twenty feet deep, and we just can't meet that. We can get to that overall area of a sixty by one twenty lot, but we just can't make some of the lots a hundred and twenty feet deep. So really, in the grand scheme of things, that and, and varying the, the right-of-way width on the cul-de-sac was really the only reason that we went to planned unit development. We thought it was easier just to do that, write down all of our standards, get all the standards on a plat, and have it be, have it be easily, easily memorialized, as opposed to having to request waivers to this, and waivers to that, and waivers to this. It just made, it just made sense to go that route. But it will be, regardless, it will be a single-family residential development once completed, there won't be any commercially zoned property or commercial uses permitted. So, Tony, it's P L U, plan, plan, plan development is what we were calling it. I do know the Area Plan Commission came up with this in two thousand and four, is when that was done, I don't think there was any real activity based from the city level to talk about a subdivision within a city, you know, and that's what this is, and that's why those, I think those setbacks were, or those lot requirements were put in place at that time. The A P C Area Plan Commission is gonna be looking at, in the future, redoing these very shortly, soon as we get through the solar farm and some other things, and I, I know that that particular one twenty depth is, is certainly gonna be on the chopping block in my mind, so. And if I can speak to that, at Platte Committee the other evening, there was a lot of discussion as to why that was even in there. There's a provision that says you can vary the width. But not the depth. But not the depth, so. It was, it was an oversight, I mean, that, that document's pretty big, you know, to get everything right the first time is pretty hard, even though it took them four years to do it, so. All right. Yeah, I don't.
Other than that, I know a lot of us are excited about this project, kind of.
Very excited.
We're kind of seeing the beginning of hopefully many more projects that happen all over the city, and I think this is kind of the tip of the spear that we're gonna see here, and I mean, we're ecstatic about it, so with that being said, let's call for a question, and then send us to area plan.
Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Stangle.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette. Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
And first reading of ordinance five, twenty twenty-one passes by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
See you at area plan.
Next is claims.
Make a motion to pay claims in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
My second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Any question on claims?
Mr. Ravellette. Mr. Gornau.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
I will abstain from the Auto Glass Express claim, but other than that, I'm, I guess.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Stangle.
Yes.
And the claims are paid by vote of seven to zero with one, with Vice President Grove abstaining from the one claim. Miscellaneous.
Oh, I have something quickly, I have something quickly under miscellaneous, these, and Brian, I know you're our tech genius, so I have noticed on our Chromebooks here that they are out of date when it comes to updating some of the software that's in there. How do you, how do we propose to move forward to get some of that updated?
You want us to send that to the people that take care of our I D?
Probably a good idea.
That'd be great.
Cheryl usually takes care of that.
So we can just, Cheryl, we can just drop them off to you, and, and at some point after you make arrangements, and we'll get them taken care of?
Yeah, I mean, whatever's best.
They just need to be updated.
They haven't been updated in four years, so, yeah.
My goodness.
That's a mild miscellaneous.
Wasn't this your project?
Anything else under miscellaneous? If not, we'll go to public comment.
And right now, C L R Incorporated, although the Endot's official press release of Hell Press Road being closed this Friday is incorrect, it'll be closed Monday.
Okay.
I think they're just trying to give a little encouragement, and it's just for approach removal, Endot's decided, I mean, we repaired Hitbridge two years ago, we're catching a little slack back there. And nothing new's happened two years ago, Endot just decided, hey, let's replace it first.
And it's gonna be closed for, I think, thirty days, is that what they said? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a long one.
It probably won't be long, but it won't be closed this week.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, for the good of the order.
All right, District One, Councilman Grove.
Well, you kind of hit on mine, the, the gift cards have been.
We were supposed to give more of it in depth.
A huge success, all the business cards have given out in my district, and it just brought a little bit of light to local businesses, and, you know, reminded everybody to shop local, and it was just a treat to kind of get those businesses out there. I enjoyed it.
Good. I thought, I mean, it's gone extremely well.
The partnership with the Chamber too, that was good too.
Yeah, yeah, big shout out to Jamie and Courtney and that group over there, without them, we really couldn't have got this, and, you know, Dan, this was, this was all Councilman Ravellette's idea.
Councilman Ravellette's idea.
So, yeah, just a great success so far, and we're just one weekend to, two weeks into it, really.
Well, the beginning of week two.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not officially two weeks into it, so. All right, District Two.
We sent a Zoom meeting with Chamber on last week, and Jennifer Emmons, the Chief Executive Officer of the Family Health Center, brought to us that there's the, the health center on ten twenty-seven Washington Avenue, it's relatively new, they, they're having a new program where they're, where they're serving underserved or uninsured population of Knox County, and some of the services are free, and it's, they're opening that up, and helping folks that otherwise would go to the emergency room for, for patient care, and they, they are a five oh one C three, so they're helping those underserved and not that, that, that group of people that don't have insurance, so it was really a positive to see that help in that with those folks with those income needs. Also, Greg Park reopened, that was nice to see a lot of activity after people walking, actually, people walking today, sitting, eating their lunch, and walking their dogs, and, and then over in Chicago Park, which, which didn't close, it was exciting to see a lot of the kids doing their sled riding off of the, the, there was a lot of sled, I watched a lot of them for a while, but then there was a lot of, you could tell it was a heavy traffic area while they were sledding while the, the snow was making, was good to sled with, and, and, so it was a lot of fun just to watch that and see the two parks with some activity in them, even despite of the snow.
All right, District Three, Councilman Stangle.
Thank you. I think we all can agree that last week was, the weather was pretty bad, they closed school for a week, and since I work for a school corporation, I didn't even have to get out of the house. So I was on Facebook a little too much, probably, but I noticed a lot of posts, people wanting to thank whoever it was that plowed their driveway, or shoveled their sidewalk, or helped them push their car out of the snow, and it just reminded me about April the eighth of two thousand and twenty, when we had a big storm come through, and just noticed so many people coming out and helping people that was in need, and was, and was needing an extra hand to remove something, but with the snow, so many people came out on their own, just helping people, I mean, even I was, even I was a recipient of a kind gesture. A neighbor seen me shoveling one of my cars out, and he came over with shovel and helped me, and, but it just made me think about how many good people there are in this town, and it really makes me proud to, to be part of it, and it's one, one of the reasons I really enjoy living here and I never moved away. I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent of the people in this town would do anything for anybody, or within their power, but just all those posts really made me, really made me proud of the people here in Vincent, and how they've helped one another, you know, that, that needed it, so, thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Ravellette, do you have anything?
I do, I do thank you. First of all, I had a chance to find my new Marshall County staff there and it's very, very, very encouraging part of our community COVID and everyone out there. Also, I had a very positive experience this morning at Good Spirit Costa. I was very impressed with, first of all, their competency, competency, their workers, also their commitment, going to call you. Very safe there, everything moves on very smoothly. And the organization and staff there. I just want to say a big shout out and thank you. A good job at Good Spirit Costa.
More importantly, how are you feeling?
Well, again, I can't tell about that, but now I can.
Good, good, good. All righty, District Five, Councilman Low.
All right, I, I really do believe if, if we look back at the last week, we can look at that dusting we had and say, wow. But no, the, the, the streets, they did an incredible job getting everything done, getting everybody back out to work and in a timely fashion. I, you know, it, it wasn't very long and the, the streets were clear, people were moving and, which I know the businesses appreciated because as I floated around and was talking to some of the businesses that, you know, COVID's been hard and other things have been hard, but, you know, having weather inclement, you know, on that type of thing is, is just, it's just one more thing. And they were very excited to see how quickly that we were able to come in, take care of that. And the guys just, they, they looked tired out there. There were a couple of mornings where I just, wow. But I, we do appreciate them. We appreciate how hard they work. And, and then just in general, we thank the police department, fire department for, you know, watching over and keeping everybody safe during that same time and making sure those that did a little sliding or got where they didn't need to be, but were taken care of.
All right, Councilman McNeese, what you got?
Let's talk about housing. The RDC, through its conversations and, and Tim Smith really pushing, pushing the load there, has, has sparked some interest. And I know this council is very appreciative. I know the mayor is very appreciative as well. And I, but it, what's surprising is the large, there was a Lincoln Heights proposal, it was large, just way out of our, I think, realm of being able to do it. There's a medium in the Broadway, what you guys are calling the Broadway Place subdivision. I love that name. And then there's the small too, Matt Hendrickson doing, doing business as First City Development. Three lots he's going to be doing and putting homes on. This, and then the KCDC doing the housing study as well. I, just pushing the, pushing that load forward is going to make a better town and a better city and give us some tax base that we desperately need. So the weird stat, I keep quoting this lately, is the 27 to 33, those are the home buyers in this world. Those are the people that we try to recruit to our community. They bring families with them, kids for school. And just happens to be that 27, 33 nationwide is the largest group of people right now. So that group, it's time to strike with irons hot, so to speak. So, well done. Thank you guys for your work on that too. So that's what I got for the good of the order.
That's good. I like that one. And when they had the First City Development, I heard an audible, ooh, you loved the name of that one.
Yeah. Matt, Matt Hendrickson's been doing tons of good work for a long time in the concrete world and he's been wanting to jump into this for six, seven years, I think now. And Brad, I know you helped him find a couple of spots and, and Joe did too, and, and this is going to work out great, so.
All right, I mean, obviously we can't thank our street department, cemetery department, parks department, fire, police. I mean, it was all hands on deck last week.
With the sheer amount of snow that we got, I mean, it was by midday after it stopped snowing that our main roads were pretty clear, our secondary roads were good and, you know, even our side roads were durable. I mean, quite impressive in the work that they've done to be able to let us get out, get out in town and get out in town safely. I mean, that's kind of the key thing. Big positive, they have schools back in session. Might have been delayed, but we were there. So that's a positive.
Very excited about that. I gotta give a shout out to my wife for getting a puppy during a snowstorm. So that was, that was awesome. She'll probably hate this when I said that. But the biggest thing, and the key thing that we keep emphasizing, I know the mayor and I, when we give our updates, the thing that we want is we want to see schools stay open, businesses stay open, we want to see events come back. And one of the big things that happened in the last couple of weeks is like sporting events, high school sporting events. They're starting to let people come back in. It, it's 50% capacity now at most places in Indiana. Some places are even higher than that. It was almost to a point where you just had, you had to be the parent to be able to go to these events. And a lot of grandparents missed out on some things. And you even see this at the YMC, at youth basketball levels where they're letting grandparents come back in and they're letting more people come in. So you're starting to see this, parts of normalcy that we're used to, people going to things, enjoying things. It was great to be able to see high school kids be able to go cheer on their classmates in the last couple of weeks at some girls' basketball games and some boys' basketball games. They hadn't been able to do that. And it's nice to be able to see these things. As long as we keep these trends, we're going to be able to go back to these things. And it's these little things, little steps every day that get us closer and closer to where we want to be. And, and right now it's getting close to the end of February. I mean, spring's coming where we can do more things outside, where we know that it's safer and it's easier to kind of space out. So I'm really excited about spring and summer coming here and us being able to do what the city's great at. And that's be together and host the events that we truly enjoy. So that's my good. Mayor?
Okay, I just want to put Dan's rumor to rest, that Marshals might be hiring, they are hiring this week. Started today through Friday, out at the Holiday Inn Express. I think 10 to 6 each day. The only other thing I say is the picture you see up on the screen, there, there's 15 vehicles there for pushing snow. Actually, there was three that are missing from that picture. It puts us at 18 vehicles that we push snow with. All of the guys that, they did a great job. Cemetery and Parks, they plow right along with the street department. City Engineer, that's his truck, but he's not the one pushing snow with it. So, and with that, through the storm, they used 300 ton of sand, or salt for this storm. So I have to commend them for all the hard work they did. And to let you know that since I've been mayor, that a lot of these vehicles, when a department buys a new vehicle, being the parks, cemetery and engineer, we make sure we buy pickups that are big enough and heavy enough that we can put a plow on it to push snow. And that's why we have that much equipment. I was, shouldn't say excited, but I heard the Terre Haute mayor talking that they had all 12 pieces of equipment out in their community pushing snow. And to think that we've got 18, made me proud, so. And that's all I've got.
All right.
Nothing else. We just need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
We are adjourned.
All right, don't forget to sign stuff, guys.
Thank you so much. All right, that was wonderful. Have a good night.
I heard, I, yes.
Very good.
Grab on that, eight inches you grab on is better.
I mean, we had.
Oh, wow, you grab on that, eight inches you grab on is better.
So I prefer, you know, I prefer to make sure that. I'm just a big boy.
So you had, did you grow up with an ice shed and pushed out there and fish like that? Did you guys do that?
Yeah, my grandfather had an ice shed. We all, we all just had, we couldn't afford that, so we, we just pulled out our boys.
Oh, and set it over top of it?
We just set it right up, you know, it just pops and away we went.
All right, what else I always see when I do that, they, they put cardboard down sometimes to keep off to just a little insulation in between.